Call this me. To order. Thank you very much. Uh, and now, uh, let me get my agenda. Um, caller, we have a quorum. I don't have a chair report. We have committee member communications. Does anybody have anything interesting they'd like to say?
Uh, do you want progress on what's happening down with the, uh, uh, committee, ad hoc committee?
Um, no, let's wait until we get into the meeting to discuss that. Uh, I guess I'll tell you something. I went, if anybody doesn't know, I went to the county board, the county parks board on a Thursday night in San Luis and, uh, was received rather well there. And, uh, that is an gr- uh, great venue for us to, uh, pursue communications and relationship with those people and they were happy to have us there. And they're in the same boat we are. Nobody goes to the meetings. They don't really hold anybody to any time limit either. If you have anything to say, they'd love to have you come down to the meeting and talk to them. They've got a trails committee that is an ad hoc committee that I've talked to Kermit about and we're, uh, thinking of trying to link up with them. They're very mu- well, I've only gone to one meeting, so I can't really clarify anything, but they're very much into connecting all the communities with trails. Trails from here to there and the whatnot. So, um, it's something that we need to keep our eye on and pursue. Pandora Nash Carner is, uh, Mr. Gibson's representative on the board. They're one board member short there too. They've only got four members. They can't even fill their board. Um, but they're going to start keeping us informed of their meetings and, uh, the whatnot. And, uh, try to facilitate that relationship a little bit more. So if anybody is inclined to the third Thursday, I believe it's the third Thursday of the month in San Luis at 6:00 PM. It's a great meeting to peek your head into and let them know that we're here and, uh, we're ready to roll. They asked me one question. They loo- I said, yeah, we got a bunch of shovel-ready projects and she kind of looks at me and she says, well, do you have any money? And I said, yes, we do. As a matter of fact, to which they opened their eyes open and we're very receptive to the things that we're doing here. So, uh, with that being said, if anybody else has anything else to say, we'll move on.
Steve, I just wanted to ask you, uh, very quickly, what was that again?
Uh, it was the county, uh, boards, parks and recs, uh, committee.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Where do they meet, Steve?
They meet in the, in the board of supervisors' chamber in the big room. Yeah, it's, you know, and they're just like us. They're in a huge room and there are nobody in there either. So, uh, there you go. So let's help them help us, I think, is really what it felt like. All right, uh, that takes us into the election of officers. I'd like to nominate Joyce for the president.
No, thank you. I, I, uh, I can't do that.
I'm just kidding, Joyce. I would never do that to you.
I didn't think you were serious, hopefully.
You are. You and I are friends, Joyce. I would never.
We are. Way back friends.
Yes. All right. What are we doing? Somebody say something.
Well, are we, we do vote for officers this time, right?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to nominate the same panel that we have today. Uh, you as president, Adolf Vice President, Joyce's recorder, secretary.
I'll second that motion.
I, uh, hold up. Wait, are you there?
Adolf?
Yeah, I have decided that, uh, I'm going to back off a bit and let somebody else get that experience being the vice president along with the president of the board. So, uh, I will drop my name out just like Joyce did.
Okay. Back to you, Mr. Johansson.
I'm trying to think of where we'd want to go with this. It was handy when Adolf hang around, hung around there, so we didn't have to make any decisions. Uh, and I do like that part. Um, uh, Kermit, how about you being, uh, vice chair? Well, I don't really want to. I don't know how long I'm going to last. Who knows? Um, that's what I was thinking of. So in the, uh, and I don't have.
Are you gonna make it?
Let's put it this way. I don't have a, I don't have a problem with it because, because that could easily be replaced next year. The, and it's not like it, there's a huge pressure on the job.
Okay. So you accept it, Kermit?
What's that?
Do you accept vice president if we vote on it?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Kermit. That was very enthusiastic.
All right. So we have a motion, uh, on the floor from Kermit that I remain president. Kermit takes the vice chair and Joyce remains the recording secretary. Do I have a second to that?
I'll second.
Jim seconds that. Does there need to be any more discussion? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Onward we move. That takes us into uh, ex officio reports. Uh, Ms. Conley, what do you have for us?
Uh, good morning. Um, I first I would just want to say I have a meeting at 11:00, so I'm going to have to leave early. Um, maybe early, Steve. Who knows? Maybe you'll be done. No, good morning. Here's my report. We held our annual meeting and January meetings on January 28th, where we passed our new goals and objectives, which we do every year, the things we want to accomplish that year. We added two new board members, Jose Luis Sanchez and Barbara Bronson Gray. So we're very excited about that. Ted Siegler and Michael Thomas cycled off the board. And we adopted our budget for the next year. On the 21st, uh, an engineering firm will be visiting the boardwalk, visiting the boardwalk alignment to do drilling to see if we can minimize the footings that we're going to use for the new linking boardwalk. The county approved, has a pre-approved plan, but they're for very large, very large pieces of concrete that I think we won't need in this site. They're more or less aimed for shrink and swell clays and what we have is sand. So we're investing in having the engineering firm come so we can have less impact on the ranch. They will be parked on the fire road the morning of February 21st. So please, please do not have an an emergency that morning. Although we could get them out of there if we need to, but it would be helpful. Uh, weeding's begun again on the ranch and trail work continues to deal with the rains and repair from the rain, but the rains also brought a lot of early weeds. So the, the weeding had to start up again. Usually they don't overlap that much, but there's nothing we can do about it. Uh, we're also, Michael Thomas is also planting monthly weeding ice plant removal parties, hauling parties on the third Saturdays of the month starting in March. So if you want to work out any aggression, it's a great thing to do to pull the ice plant and haul it. Speaking of which, we're going to hold a volunteer recruitment event at our offices on Tuesday, February 28th from 2:00 to 5:00. Um, not that we've lost any volunteers over the edge of the bluff, but could always use more volunteers, especially for events, actually. And the wildflower show is going to return the last week of April. So that's in planning. It will be the first wildflower show I've been able to attend. So I'm very excited about that. And in another return to normalcy, Green Space is planning an earth event in the Creekside Reserve for April. So we'll be taking part in that with, with, uh, Green Space. And finally, last Saturday, we had a visit from AmeriCorps volunteers who's just spent a month at, um, Piedras Blancas working there. So they came and they spent the day on the ranch. They did work on the east ranch, cleaning up the trees that FFRP planted with the beautification grant from the county. So they were weeding around the trees, making sure they're in good shape, mulching them. And, uh, they ended up, because there were six of them and Brian Morgan led it, ended up being like 40 hours worth of work in one morning, which was super. And since these trees basically get annual attention, it was, it was great to have them weeded and cleaned out again. That's, that's my report. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Kitty. I'm always impressed by the work you guys do out there.
Terrific volunteers.
Yeah, you guys seem very efficient on a wide array of topics. Just even, even that the footing itself on that project and the concern that, that you have for it means something. I don't know what it means, but I'm impressed by it. Thank you.
It seems like construction projects and I want them to be as simple as possible.
Yeah, yeah. Good. Go for it.
Steve, if I could just, if I could just quickly ask Kitty, who were those volunteers again? Were they just led by Brian or some people from out of the area?
They were AmeriCorps volunteers. So they're on a year-long AmeriCorps trip. They've left Piedras Blancas now to go to the Sierras. But that, they're working on BLM land for the year. Really good workers.
And there were eight of them, uh, Kitty?
Six, six.
Okay.
Yeah. Hardworking, enthusiastic, funny. Really everything you want.
Okay. Any other questions for Kitty? Seeing none, we'll go to Julie. Julie, skate park. Give us some good news.
Oh, I've got good news. Good morning. Can everybody hear me okay? All right. A couple of things to get you updated on. First, uh, on calendar, on February 25th, Saturday, 8:00 AM to 10:00 AM at the American Legion. Those guys are always such great supporters. Thank you, Steve and the crew out there. We're going to be doing another pancake plate so you can skate. Fundraiser, last time we did this, it was two years ago at Halloween-ish. We raised roughly almost $4,000. So $5 pancakes, eggs, they are famous pancakes and, um, sausage, orange juice. Come on out. You can dine in or drive through again, February 25th, Saturday, 8:00 AM to 10:00 AM. So that's just to keep the project front and forward. And of course, um, a fundraising effort on that. Also excited to let you know that, um, Slow Roll Community Initiative, which is out of San Luis Park and Rec, um, they've got an event coming up on May 13th. This is in collaboration with Slow County Parks. And it's called Skate Loves Slow and it's an all-wheel event out at the park in Slow. And of course we will be participating. We're just so happy to have them extending invitations to us because it tells you know, all our surrounding communities that we are real, that this project is coming and the skate park is in the loop. So between Monster Skate Jam and the Slow Roll Community Initiative, we're very excited to be in partnership with, um, Slow County Park and Rec. The most exciting thing to share with you, and I'm so glad to see Carlos, um, on the screen this morning, uh, is I'll kind of roll it out just a little bit with no pun intended. And Carlos, if you don't mind chiming in, um, and filling in some gaps, uh, we've worked diligently on a couple of calls over the last week, yesterday being one of them. Carlos has brought to the table a grant opportunity that could take this project completely across the finish line. It is with California Park and Rec or California State Parks. It's a land and water conservation fund grant. Carlos and I sat on a nine to 12, a half-day workshop um, just last week in regards to this grant. It lines up, I'm going to use the word perfectly, um, with the skate park. There's a lot of moving parts to this grant. It is a 50/50 match, so potentially a half million dollars. And the grant is due by June 1st. So that's just some of the details. I'm going to let Carlos, um, fill in whatever else he feels would be appropriate at this time to mention, other than we know that it would be coming to you very swiftly because we want to put it in front of pros properly, as well as the finance committee before it gets to the CCSD board in regards to a proper resolution. So, and that of course would be permission to submit the application. Carlos, did I fill it in from there? I hope I did it justice by at least rolling it out.
I don't know. I think you, I think you covered everything. Um, good morning, everybody. Uh, no, we're excited. Uh, as soon as I saw the, uh, the grant opportunity, um, I immediately thought about the skate park. Uh, mostly because one of the requirements is a 50/50 match and obviously Skate Cambria has done a fantastic job over the last couple of years, uh, working very hard to, uh, acquire funds. And so they have the match. Um, and so this'll, this'll take us to the finish line, uh, as Julie mentioned. Uh, the deadline is June 1st, uh, to, uh, submit our application. And that obviously, even though it seems like it's a, a few months away, um, it quickly comes by. Uh, and so we're trying to get this grant, uh, submitted. There are many moving parts to it. Um, I guess I'll ask now, uh, for future agenda items, uh, for our board president, she, um, uh, well, we, we discussed it with Karen yesterday. Uh, and she's suggesting that in order to move this a little faster, because it's not on the agenda today and we can't really discuss, uh, a lot of the details on this grant. Uh, she's suggesting that pros have a special meeting, uh, here soon in the next week or so, uh, so that we can go over the details of the grant and pros can weigh in to the board on whether they support the grant. Uh, and then we can bring it to the finance committee and then to the board, uh, hopefully, uh, at the beginning of, uh, let's see, March. Um, so that's sort of the skeleton, um, ideas on it. And, um, like I said, it's, it's more talking here in detail than the next, uh, pros meeting.
Carlos, I just want to add in, the skate park is directly on this list and this grant is specific to outdoor recreation. It must be for outdoor recreation. So I just want to emphasize that. Um, and again, Carlos and I both mentioned a key part of this grant is a 50/50 match. So, um, it is very, very exciting. Uh, we appreciate you learning more as we, um, put those materials together for you to properly have a meeting just on this item. And Steve, if you'd be so kind to find a way to get a special meeting called, we just, we don't want to lose the opportunity to get this through all the channels to get it in front of the board. So thank you very much for the consideration. It's a wonderful opportunity.
Uh, that's, that sounds great. Jim, what do you got?
Uh, Carlos, um, is, are there two board meetings this month? One on the 23rd, perhaps?
There are two board meetings. Um, one has already gone out, the agenda.
But maybe we can get it on the, on the agenda for the 23rd rather than waiting for March. And as, because I think this is an opportunity we shouldn't let slip by and, um, and having us, and Steve, if you can call a special meeting um, next Tuesday, the 14th or something, um, you know, we can endorse this and move on. That's my suggestion. I say, don't wait uh, till March. That's my thought.
Yeah, I think the only, uh, so I agree as far as expediting it, uh, the only thing that, uh, our general manager, acting general manager and board president wanted to do was to take it to the finance committee. The finance committee meets on the 28th of this month. So it's after the board meeting. Uh, and so that will take us to the first meeting in March is what, uh, we're anticipating to take this to the board.
All right. Maybe you could present, so you can present something to the finance committee after the board makes an act, an, an action item on the twen- on the 28th and inform them what they've decided. It, I, I just, um, I don't see reasons to delay, but I'll go with the people that want to do it. Bye.
Well, to Jim's point, Steve, I mean, pros can do a special meeting. You, you can certainly hear it out and at least have that mark, that box checked, Jim, right to your point.
Right. And also Steve on his, can report to the board on the 23rd on what the, uh, board's position is so that on the 28th a- and when the board meets, uh, first thing in March, that we have more, uh, you know, more rubber on the tire, right? So.
Uh, Jim, I just want to let you know that our first board meeting is this Thursday, which is the 9th. And our second board meeting is the 16th. There's a board meeting on the 23rd.
Okay, 16, okay. All right. Thanks.
Anybody else? I don't want to belabor this point. So I want to, I'm just like, all right, tell me what to do because I'm like, my first thought is they don't need us and they don't need the finance committee. They're the board. Tell the board to go get the grant. I don't know what I'm going to look at in the grant that's going to make me say no. So tell the finance committee, I mean, if they've got something, but I'd just say be the board, be strong, go get the grant. You don't care. We're already building a project. So anyway, but I'll call a special meeting tomorrow morning, 9 o'clock, 15 minutes. Boom, we're done. So anyway, Carlos, who's going to set that meeting up? You and Haley or something?
Yeah, we, we can set it up. Uh, we, we can work with you on the language. Uh,
I mean, I'm super, I'm super overly excited. I'm just like, no, I'll go drive a truck to where it's at. Let's go get it, right? We cannot miss this. That would be silly. So there you go. Tell me what to do.
Yeah, I think it's just a matter of you, uh, maybe, maybe now or maybe after just discussing what date you want to set this meeting, whether it's next Tuesday uh, or another, another day.
Well, are, so are we doing that right now?
Uh, hey, Steve, on a future agenda item, why don't you just schedule a meeting on the 14th, a Zoom at 10 o'clock? And we'll get it done.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. We're going to do that in this agenda under future agenda items.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Let's move on then. That is.
One question.
Go ahead.
Uh, how much was the grant for? Or up to?
So the, the grant, uh, they have $30 million available, uh, for grants. The maximum, uh, you can request for a grant is 6 million. Uh, this, the skate park, um, project is coming in at a little over 1 million. And Skate Cambria has the match, which is a little over 500,000.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I have a little funny feeling in my tummy like I'm going to Disneyland tomorrow and I'm in fourth grade.
Me too.
I'm like, all right, don't get excited. Who's going to pop this bubble? But it just sounds pretty sweet. No, Harry, you got a big old smile on your face. What am I missing here?
Well, it's, it's a blessing and, uh, you know, Carlos and Julie definitely need, uh, two thumbs up all the way around. But I'm smiling with you because of your, uh, unbridled enthusiasm and your, um, you know, drawing the analogy between being in the fourth grade and going to Disneyland and the skate park. Who wouldn't be smiling at hearing that?
All right, right on. Uh, any other, uh, comments that we have on that particular item? Seeing none, we're going to move on. Nice work, Julie.
Wait, I just, I really want to, I want, want to give a compliment to Carlos for stepping up and working with me and, and bringing me into the loop. And, you know, we've got a journey ahead of us. We know this. Um, but, uh, I just, ahead of time, I want to say thank you for the enthusiasm, Carlos, and the call was extremely constructive yesterday with, with Karen and with Ray and with Harry and with Carlos and, um, deeply appreciated. So.
By the way, excuse me, I don't mean to interrupt Julie, but, um, Steve, um, Carlos, perhaps you could provide the timeline with regard to how this is going to move forward, uh, for the, you know, the, the, maybe we could do it at the special meeting, but since we're discussing it right now, just to let Steve and the other members of the commission know.
Uh, yeah, I think, I think I can provide all that info on the special, uh, meeting. That way I can, I can share that timeline and it's, it's
Okay.
part of a visual, uh, that they can see.
All right.
Nice work, people. All right. Public comment on items not on the agenda. Uh, all right. I will share with the group who is in the audience. Amy Wyatt is here. Crosby and Laura Schwartz are here. Dick Clark, Jeff Wilson and Michael Calderwood. Do any of you folks have a comment you'd like to make about something not on the agenda? And I'm not seeing any hands raised. Is that correct? Good. Well, we're happy to have you. And, um, Ms. Wyatt, we saw your, uh, application for the board, so I'm assuming that is in process. And that take, and then hold on, I've got something else. I've got a couple of, uh, public comments I need to read.
Right.
And, uh, Lauren Younger has written a public comment. Can you present a synopsis of the January 7th community meeting on your website? Thank you. And I'm, I, I assuming that's in regards to the, uh, the park. And I'm, I'm not in control of the website. I can't even answer that question. Haley, are you in the building?
I, I don't see her there, but I'm sure the, the minutes will probably provide that info, uh, to her.
Uh, uh, on the January 7th, yeah, if she can find him on the website. Good luck with that. Um, and, and, uh, another one is, uh, here, uh, this is from Stan Telazan and he writes, will the CSD please find the wherewithal to properly pave the rodeo grounds road? During the dry season, the road is rutted, dust bowl. During the, every winter storm, large amounts of material road on the roadbed flow into the creek, further silting it up, endangering what little salmon traffic make their way up the creek to spawn? Additionally, large amounts of dirt wind up on the Burton Drive Bridge, creating a driving hazard from the slick nature of the material and the berms that results from traffic packing the dirt down. Furthermore, this situation does not present Cambria in its best light to all the tourist traffic driving on Burton. Properly paving the road and providing well-designed runoff areas for any silted material will be a win-win-win for Cambria's citizens, visitors and salmon. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Telazan. I don't believe that road. Carlos, you got anything on that?
Yeah, I would only say, uh, I, I, I've been, uh, I've been asked the same question by some of the, uh, uh, folks that visit the, uh, dog park. And, uh, I just let them know that the, uh, rodeo grounds is actually not CCSD-owned. It's actually county-owned road. And so the county would be the one you, uh, to pave that.
There you go. All right.
So a- a- as an action item, can we ask the county to pave the road or when, when is it scheduled? Uh, for a safety perspective? Um, who, who's going to ask the county to, to? He- here's a suggestion on that. Uh, the north, uh, the, uh, NACA does have a transportation committee. It hasn't met in six months, maybe almost a year. But that's the place to do it or just bring it up. I'm a member, uh, for District 5 here and so I can bring this up at the, uh, next board thing, even though we probably don't have transportation. Aaron Lynn's in charge of transportation. He's never held a meeting that I know of. And the, uh, but just bring it up as a general discussion item and I will do that. I'd like to get a copy of that. Where do I find that thing? Is that on the website?
I can send that to you.
Please do, you know, but, uh, this would be another one where it would not be a bad, goals and objectives for us, for us to sort of pursue in case NACA drops it like they probably will.
I think you mean NCAC, not NAC.
That's the one. Yeah, you're right. I'm not good at alphabet. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments on those two topics? Perfect. Seeing none, we're going to move into facilities and resources. Carlos, what do you got for us? How's your life?
Life is good. I can't complain. And I'm sorry I missed, uh, your meeting last month. Um, as you know, we had some, uh, very intense storms, uh, last month. Uh, and so our department was working very hard through those storm events. Uh, and I will share some, some of the photos of, uh, the work we did, um, just to share with you some of the impacts and the work that we performed. Um, so hopefully hopefully everybody can see that. So as I mentioned, we, uh, we worked through, uh, a number of storms, uh, in January. Uh, we had, uh, quite a few trees come down on the Fiskelini Ranch. Uh, in total, uh, between the December and January storms, uh, we are at about 80 trees on the Fiskelini Ranch that affected either trails or property or fire breaks. Um, during those storms, we ended up closing, uh, all of the forest trails, uh, for a number of days to keep the public safe. Um, but we quickly worked through those issues. Uh, as you can see here, the department was out uh, on some long days, uh, working. Uh, on some long days, uh, working, uh, bringing down, uh, the hazardous trees. Cleaning up branches, um, and just working through those, those storms. We're able to get, uh. All of the forest trails reopened fairly quickly. Uh, and we appreciate the public, uh, stayed out of the, uh, those areas when we put up those signs. Um, we also, because of the storm, we had, uh, a landslide that occurred on the east ranch. Uh, you can see on the top pictures. A ground view of that slide and then on the bottom, uh, you can see an aerial view of the mudslide that brought, had not only. Uh, mud, but also multiple trees, uh, somewhere in the seven to nine, uh, trees were brought down. Uh, so we do have some cleanup to do, uh, to do there. Uh, we also had some issues on our trails, uh, so, uh. There were a number of trails that were closed due to flooding. Uh, all of the flooding trails are now open at this point. But we do have some, uh, issues that we have to address and fix. So on the left-hand side is the Santa Rosa Creek Trail. Uh, that is the only trail that remains closed at this point and we have some, some erosion that we have to, to repair on that and also clean up some debris that, uh. Uh, that was left, uh, from the creek. Uh, the middle picture, uh, on the screen is the east ranch, uh, and that just shows you how much rain came down. It actually turned into a small little lake there. Uh, and then on the right-hand side, uh, one of the things that are brought up to, uh, the friends of the Fiscalini Ranch. Uh, that is the emergency road. Uh, so the fire chief, uh. Asked for that road to be opened, uh, when Windsor Boulevard was overtaken by the creek. And so we were actually doing traffic control on that for about half a day. Uh, but one of the things that's happening to that trail is because of all the water, uh, that has, uh, gone through it. There's a lot of what's, a lot of damage to it. Uh, it's still drivable. It still can be used as an emergency road, but we do have to do some maintenance to it to get it back to. Good usable shape. And so we're gonna be looking at doing that work here. Hopefully, uh, this month and not early next month, uh, we're just trying to time. Uh, weather-wise and how wet that trail is for us to do that work. Uh, not only did we have issues on the Fiscalini Ranch with trees, but we also had issues on our open space properties. As, as you all know, we, we own. A significant amount of, uh, lots throughout town, and so we were also responding to issues. Uh, with damage from, uh, CCSD trees on, uh, private property. Uh, trees falling on, uh, county roads. Uh, and also just, uh, concerns by neighbors, as you can see on the right, uh, top. Uh, there was a tree that had, uh, started to uproot and lean towards a house, and so we expedited the, uh, removal of that tree. Uh, from that house. Uh, all in all, we, we had about ten trees, uh. That we were dealing with on open space property. So that, that brings the total up to about ninety trees that we dealt with December and. Uh, in January. And, uh, the main workload is going to happen, uh, summertime and, uh, weed abatement when we actually start to clean up these trees. Uh, also, we had some, uh, flooding down at the Vetsol, um. Some significant flooding, uh, where the rodeo grounds in the back of the parking lot, uh, was flooded. Uh, we did end up closing that, uh, portion of the parking lot for, uh, a week or two. Uh, due to the fact that not, not only did it flood, but there was, uh, a significant amount of mud that was left there. And so you see on the bottom pictures, uh, we actually, um. Scraped, loaded and, uh, power washed that parking lot to get it back to usable. Um, uh, usable space. Uh, I did speak to the American Legion and they reported very little damage to the American Legion's, uh. Bar and kitchen, so that was, uh, a big relief that they didn't suffer any more, any more damage there. Uh, and then just wanted to also let you know that you, while we were doing that, we were also working on a major, uh, homeless encampment cleanup process, so. We wanted to expedite, uh, this cleanup. We found that we had about ten encampments on CCSD property. And a lot of these encampments were just, uh, uh, very close, if not next to the creek. Um, and so we actually warned. Uh, the folks that were living there, uh, about the potential for, uh, their encampments to, uh, get washed away or, or. For them to be harmed. Uh, and we were fortunate that none of these folks were, uh, hurt. Uh, we did have about, um. Three encampments, three to four encampments that were either partially washed away or, uh, completely washed away. So this encampment here is at the corner of Highway One and, and, uh, Windsor Boulevard, uh, right behind the wastewater plant and you see some of the. Uh, items there in the encampment. We have multiple encampments across Cambria Drive and Highway One, also on Fiscalini Ranch. Uh, we had an encampment, uh, on an open space property below Ramsey, uh, Road, uh, right at the edge of the Fiscalini Ranch. And we also had an encampment on the Pocket Park on Center Street. And so as I mentioned, we, uh, we expedited, expedited that cleanup, uh, with the help of a contractor and law enforcement. Uh, we started at the Pocket Park and cleaned that up. And moved over to, uh, Windsor and Highway One, and you see some of the equipment that we brought in and law enforcement that was helping us for that, uh, project. Uh, and this is the, uh, Ramsey cleanup, which was very steep and most of the stuff is bagged and hauled up, uh, with rope to the, uh, to the road. And this is some of the material that we typically find in these encampments, which is obviously a concern due to, to where they're at in the forest, uh, but we find a lot of, uh. Uh, fire pits, propane tanks, uh, barbecues, gas, and obviously, uh, you know, syringes and drugs there as well. Uh, all in all, we, we, uh, were able to remove about eighty yards of trash. And we have about, uh, eight yards of personal belongings that we're storing for somebody here, uh, and we're coordinating. Um, uh, the retrieval of that with that person. Um, so I'll stop my screen share and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Well, thanks for taking all the fun out of that. Carlos, that's heartbreaking right there. I don't even know what to tell you. Kermit? You're muted. Nope, you're still muted.
You still have to store all that stuff you haul off for someone to come and pick it, pick through it again? The owner? And how long do you hold it? Where do you hold it? I don't, I don't need my stuff back. I'm not trying to get that. I'm just trying to figure out what big a load that is to you.
Yeah, so that is, that is actually a, uh, a major, uh, part of the, the cleanup process. We don't want to, uh, throw away anybody's personal belongings. Um, so, uh, we do separate, uh, and in fact. Uh, the person that, uh, we collected some of this stuff, she was there helping us, uh. You know, figure out what to throw away and what to keep. And so we actually store, uh, her belongings on a trailer. Uh, we bring it over to our facility here and it's stored, um, away from the weather, so it doesn't, uh, doesn't get damaged. Uh, we provide her with, uh, our contact info and also where to pick up, uh, her, um, belongings. Uh, we have to store that, uh, for ninety days. So, uh, that is the, uh, that is the time that we have to store it.
Now, on the one with the, the Jeep at the entrance there, or in that, you might have taken it, the guy with the Jeep obviously rode away. Uh, or did he? Was that? Item sitting there too? What do you, what do you, people there, what do you, you, what do you do with it?
Yeah, so that was, uh, an interesting experience to see, uh, a vehicle, uh. You know, off-road, uh, in an encampment. So I, I obviously we spoke to the person and, and, uh. That person left, uh, within a few minutes after we spoke to them.
Kitty?
I wanna thank Carlos for taking such good care of the ranch and getting it back open after the storm so quickly. Um, and, um, also CCSD for their great communications around this issue. Um, I think that was very much appreciated by the community.
Yeah, I agree with that. And Carlos, I did drive the fire road in the middle of all that and that road is becoming somewhat suspect. In that situation, yeah.
Yeah, no, I agree with you. I mean, at this point, uh, like I said, it's, it's drivable. I don't wanna cause panic, uh, to the community. If it's. If it's needed, we'll open it up and, uh, people can drive by. Uh, but it is bumpy for cars and, you know, it's an ADA accessible trail and so it's, it's becoming a little bit of an issue for our. ADA folks to be able to use it.
Any other questions for Carlos?
There, there's a comment from the public.
Oh, right on. Uh, Mr. And Mrs. Schwartz, I'm gonna allow you to talk. There you go.
Thank you, Mr. Niffen, our president. Got a question here and again, thank you, Carlos, for cleaning up and taking care of all the storm damage. It's very important to us that hike and love in the forest. My question is, and this is, this is a, a real question that's been bothering me here. Okay, this homeless situation, which is unfortunate for everybody. Uh, and very expensive and it takes up so much of your time and it takes up so much of our funding. Now, I realize there's all kinds of rules that you have to hold. Uh, you know, personal belongings and you have to give them notice to evacuate and everything. Now, this might be a question to Carlos and Kitty. Am I incorrect thinking that the Fiscalini Ranch closes at sunset? And most of these parks that we see close at sunset. Now, wouldn't it be better to take a pre-active, a preemptive? And have volunteers or even hire at some expense to have people go through and close it at sunset? And if nobody is camping there, then you don't have to notify them to leave. So take, can you take a preemptive? Uh, action and make sure that everybody is close, gone at sunset and then there's no camps. Is that a possibility? Thank you.
Kitty, do you wanna touch that or Carlos?
I prefer Carlos did, but I can start by saying there are, I think there are fourteen. Formal entrances to the ranch in addition to. Non-trailhead entrances and four hundred and thirty-seven acres, some of which is heavily wooded.
Okay.
Hard to, hard to find people is what I mean.
But how much does it cost you to get rid of them?
That's.
Am I still on?
Yes.
Oh, okay. The thing is, okay, it's, it's a tremendous expense to try to patrol the place, I understand. But the kind of money that we're paying for Carlos's time. To encounter the homeless and talk to them and store their stuff and then hire contractors to clean it up. And the damp, the potential damage that it does to the forest. I'm just trying to think of a, a different way to handle this and, and save us some money and save our forests.
Thank you. Joyce?
Uh, actually, you know, confronting the homeless could be a very dangerous situation for just a plain old volunteer. I. I think it would, uh, take someone who knows how and has been trained. Like Carlos to talk to them. I don't think just anybody could do that.
Yeah, I, we're gonna move on from this point. I appreciate Laura's, uh. Idea that is there some way to preemptively keep them from starting the camp so that we don't have to spend all the money? And so, um, I appreciate the comments and we're all gonna struggle with this in the future. Okay, we're gonna move on now to the, uh, consent or to the consent agenda item and, uh, the minutes from the last meeting. Anybody wanna touch that? Jim?
Steve, uh, you had somebody ask about the minutes and I'm, I'm actually looking at them. And, um, it says, it's, uh, it's printed on draft paper. Meaning that once it's, it's a draft until we vote and approve the minutes and then they can be posted on the website and stuff like that. So the person that was asking for it, uh, you have a written comment from them. I hope you, you can take it out of the agenda packet after we approve it. And send it to them or something. Uh, and, and when I looked at the, at the, uh, minutes. And, and if you were, if everybody were to take another look at it, we actually did something last time. We, and we said we should encourage Cambria Community Nonprofit Recreation Open Stays. Including the County Board of Supervisors and appropriate county staff to go to a pros meeting. But Steve, when you talked about going to, um, you know, to the Board of Supervisors meeting about, um. Um, parks and open space from the county, um, you, you mentioned that we have money, but they probably have money too. They're looking for, um. For, um, shovel-ready projects that they can, uh, actually promote. So, um, I. I will volunteer to go to the next one of those meetings, the third Thursday, uh, to understand better. What they're doing. So I'll volunteer to actually go there, hopefully this time and see if we can get them to provide funding for us.
Um. Hey, Jim, aren't we trying to get a motion to accept the minutes?
Yeah, I'm, I'm talking about it first though.
Okay.
You have to live with it. Uh. We also said propose and organize a pedestrian and bicycle system for connection and safety reasons. And I think Kermit's been looking for that kind of thing. So on the, the third Thursday. I encourage Kermit, if he wants, to, uh, understand what the bicycle paths are from the county's, um. Parks and Recreation Group. Um, and, uh, we were talking about a grant writer. And for exploring possibilities to writing grants for specific, um, projects. And I really think that the, some of our funds could go toward. And Julie will talk about it a little bit. The ad hoc committee has put out, um. A request for people to understand different things and one of them is a. Uh, disc golf. Um, Julie will talk about it a little bit later, but to put some of our funds toward, um. Defining that or having a, a consultant actually lay out the disc golf, golf. I think we can use that money and it's later on in the agenda. And we have three viable projects and I recommend that we approve the minutes as written.
Uh, good, could I add one more thing on there?
Well, well, hold on. What do we add? I'm not sure we're, I'm following what's going on right now.
Approve the minutes.
Alright, so let's make, I loved everything Jim was talking about, but I don't wanna talk about it, right? Don't we just want to approve the minutes? Kermit, is that true?
Uh, yes, it was and I was, because I was gonna just talk about. I wanted to get into when we're gonna talk about the agenda, the, uh, uh, goals and objectives the, the board's. Copied. So that's all I had. Second to, second the approval of the minutes.
But Steve, I just have a correction in the minutes.
Okay.
Correction. And Joyce, I, I have to apologize. It says, um, it talks about our next fundraiser and it says eight AM to ten PM. And I just wanna reflect it to be correct, eight AM to ten AM, because that's a long pancake breakfast.
Long pancake. I believe those were mine, those were my minutes, so I'm sorry, Julie.
No, no, no problem. I just wanna make sure they're correct.
Okay, so we have a, uh, motion from Kermit to accept the minutes and I've got a second from Jim.
Jim was, Jim, Jim was first.
Alright, Jim made the motion and Kermit seconded to accept the minutes from January. All in favor, say aye. Minutes carry. Alright, that takes us into some regular business, which we don't have any action items to actually go over. But let's, uh, discuss a couple of things. Number one, in this one, let's figure out when we wanna have the special meeting.
I think that Tuesday suggestion was very good.
Uh, so that'll be the fourteenth?
Right.
And how long? We don't need more than a half an hour.
I don't think you need that long.
I say ten minutes.
Yeah.
Okay. So Carlos, we're gonna tentatively look at the fourteenth and when can you announce that to get it all brown acted?
Alright, I'm just looking at my calendar. Obviously, um, looks like I have a commitment. And I think also, uh, Director Farmer has the same commitment. Uh, at ten o'clock, we're gonna be discussing, uh, the Vetsol and I think. Uh, I think Jim also has that commitment.
Yeah, I forgot about that. How about make it, uh?
How about nine o'clock?
No, yeah.
Yeah.
Nine to nine fifteen.
Carlos?
Yeah, that works fine for me.
Yeah, nine to nine thirty, in and out. Julie, can you make that work?
Yes, thank you.
It sounds like that's gonna be us.
Need a motion. Need a motion or anything?
No, sure.
Make a motion. Have a meeting February ninth from nine to nine, nine o'clock.
February fourteenth.
I'll second it.
Second from Joyce, all in favor, say aye. February the fourteenth, nine o'clock in the morning to work on that uh. Grant, beautiful. All right, any other topics? Kermit, uh, back to what uh, Jim was saying about you and him hooking up with the county. Is that correct? Is that what I'm hearing, Jim?
I I volunteer to at least take a look at that first meeting. I I don't know why you walked in there, but I'm I'm glad you did. I don't know if you had made an appointment or not, but.
No, no, I, it was basically when we were, had been discussing in the past. Trying to figure out a better connection and um. Uh, that's when I reached out to Bruce or Mr. Gibson and he told me Pandora Nash Carter. I shot her an email. She said, yeah, come to the meeting. And we'll let you talk. And I just went down there to basically and let him know where we are. And she said at one time she had been reaching out to us, trying to get us more informed. But felt like the email was getting lost in in the process of whoever. And when I don't fault him for that, you know that happens. So. Um, the onus is on us. If we go down there to that meeting and show our face, we're gonna get a lot of juice.
Why, why, I've suggested, why didn't Jim go the first time when he has first chance? And I'll take the alternative meeting. So we spread ourselves out. So we we cover it.
Literally, Kermit, I felt like their tro's, the pro, their ad hoc committee on the trails and whatnot. If you go to one of those meetings, you're gonna end up leading that committee.
I don't want to do that.
Yeah, I know. But anyway, they're they're looking for people too, you know? Don Ortiz Leg walked up to me when I was sitting there and she said, do you want to be on the board? And I'm like. You're not even in my district. And she's like, you don't have to be in the same districts. They're just searching also, you know, for people that want to volunteer their time. So um, yeah, I'd encourage it. I think it's good for us. Anything else? Carlos, any other things we want to touch on? What about the bathrooms?
Which bathrooms?
The uh, East West Ranch. Are we still going with that? That feels good.
Yeah, I think Ray's still working on that. Um, if you, if you wanted to reach up 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 to him.
No, I don't want to bug anybody about anything. I want everybody to keep working on whatever they're doing.
No, he's he's working diligently on it.
Do you think they're gonna start that in the summer?
I think the last time I spoke to Ray, that was his uh, that was his goal to try to get something uh, uh, ready by summertime.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I was just out on the east ranch the other day walking that big trail and that is just ready to go. It's gorgeous out there. All right, anybody got anything else?
Goals and objectives.
Goals and objectives, Kermit, go ahead.
I don't know, I'm asking, what did we end up from the final board? It didn't look like anything that we submitted.
We submitted them. There you go.
Well, can I add in on that, Steve? Cause I was at that meeting, the board and Harry, of course, being on the board. The board basically said that that this list wasn't sufficient. In other words, it wasn't defined. And that they wanted it looked at again. That came from Director Dean, I'm sorry, Director um, Gray. That it needed to be more definitive um, and represented. Am I wrong in saying that, Harry?
Uh, no, I don't think so. So they only took one item off our our list.
It was more than that, Kermit. It was way more than that.
Well, they have pros and objectives. Uh, that's all I saw in the board meeting. When I sat there is they they redefined everything. They put all the work items in. The goals and objectives for the year. It wasn't like goals and objectives. It was almost like a task to be completed. And our, most of our project, the goals were left off from what I've conceived. What we've received one goal and that was for trails, like look at trails or something like that. I don't even know how they rewrote it.
I'm in a kind of a strange place because I'm reporting as an ex officio, but I also have a hand in. Permit on the goals and objectives. I think it would be worthy, Steve, to reach out to President Dean. And get very specific instruction on how these goals are to be set. Um, because that's what the board is looking for. And this list was not meeting their needs. And it's already gonna be March. So by the time this gets done, half of the year will be gone on the two thousand twenty-three goals and objectives.
They were long range anyway, so.
That's good. I think it's a conversation with President Dean. I mean, maybe you guys can just take this list and rework it. I mean, it's it's kind of funny, right? I mean, I'll just talk transparently on the, I mean, why don't they just write them and give them to you? You know what I mean? I mean, hello.
Uh, yeah, that's, well, because, uh, and I don't want to be, I don't want to be a burr under the saddle. I was like, I don't feel like I got direction from the board. One member's comments is not direction. Direction is a motion and a second and an approval of the motion to give us direction. Not to say, nah, I don't really like those goals.
So let's do.
All right, I don't, you know.
Take this list to President Dean and I would have a conversation and just go through the list and ha- have her help you define them.
I'm just, I'm literally not the person for this. Right, I wrote the goals down, skate park, bathrooms, east ranch. I'm done with writing goals. I just can't. I sat through an eight-hour meeting on Tuesday. Yeah, literally, look me in the face. I'm telling you. I sat through an eight-hour strategic planning meeting where they talked about goals. And they burned an week's worth of labor, a week of labor. Not to mention eight hours paying a lawyer to sit and watch it. And now they want me to rewrite my goals. I'm like, I I I just don't have it in me. But if someone else did, they could. Adolf?
Yeah, just a question. So so our goals and objectives really have been defined for several years in terms of the community park. And I don't know what they really want from us, other than to say that these are the. You know, these are the uh, kind of phases of the park that we have talked about and discussed. And those are the things that. That uh, do we have to prioritize prioritize that for them? Or do we just simply uh, say that? You know, this thing's been in progress for several years and we're simply.
Yeah, because now we're on this grant. You want to know what my number one priority and goal is right now is getting a half a million dollars for free. So I'm great. You've got this little piece of paper that's mentioning my goals this year, but we need to get that grant.
So so the grant's part of what we could actually.
The skate park, number one. Anyway, Kermit, what do you want me to do?
Here's, here's one suggestion. We don't have a, we didn't get much direction from them from the pros committee. And that was basically what that we wrote our goals and you you. As far as I was concerned, I proposed some of them and and those are others we we were already on, just needed definition. But if they aren't gonna pay attention and focus on this, I I wouldn't hurt to meet with Karen Dean. But I don't know, maybe we don't, maybe we just put them at the top of our list. And we just charge ahead because they don't know what we're doing. Uh, Harry doesn't, doesn't, won't squeal on us. Uh, we can probably just run rampant through the woods and because they don't give us anything else to do, why wouldn't we just? Pick our own goals and objectives because we're not gonna do anything until we get money and final approval anyway. I mean, we're we're, it's not like. We're dangerous. Uh, we are unarmed and uh, happen to.
Over here.
We could do, we could talk about travel law. We could talk about an educational station. It doesn't make a difference to get.
Steve, I think it's a quick call with President Dean to say, this is our list, double down. Don't understand, it's good enough. It's some type of an outline of.
Yeah.
Of your considerations and their discussions anyways, right?
Yeah, I will reject.
Down, double down on the list and say, we did our best. Here you go. There's, there it is.
Yeah.
Wait till next year. It's only eight months away now.
And Steve, the reason I did the rant on the minutes is that there are six things in there that was. Direction that we had determined on our, at our last min- meeting. And you might want to take a peek at that once again.
Okay. Yeah, no, I I'm with those, I'm with getting stuff done. It's just writing it all down and talking about it every time. Just frustrates me.
Can I clarify this for the minutes? You are Mr. Steve going to call Karen Dean or email her? And ask her how we should go forward or something to that effect, okay? That, okay, all right.
Yeah, to Jim's point, um, the nice thing about this list is it's pretty generic. You know what I mean? Like you can, there's a lot of wiggle in these in the sense of discussion. Um. But yeah, I think it's it's just a quick call with President Dean and saying, here it is. And that's the best we can do. And that's, that's what we got. So there you go.
Good. Anybody else? Harry, you're looking like you're looking for some info.
Yeah, I'm trying to see my relatively sparse notes here from that meeting. And um, one of the suggestion was uh, to um, survey the Cambria community. With regard to what uh, you know, they would want pros to be pursuing. Um, as well as maybe checking with the county to see what kind of support that we can get from them. Uh, let me see what else. And also um. Perhaps uh, pros can reach out to other entities, other agencies. Uh, either here in this community or in the county to get support from them. And um, there was also a suggestion of maybe uh, an advisory committee. And I think this is an advisory committee, not so much from pros, but perhaps from the board. But I can't be a hundred percent uh, true on that. Um, so that, those, those are my um. My relatively, like I said, not not very substantial comments on what I have written down here. My apologies.
No, that that was as good as what I heard.
Yeah, that's about it.
So question is, is uh, is the board really trying to anticipate funding for projects that we might suggest? And maybe that's something that.
No, they didn't recognize.
For, you know, for the future.
They didn't have anything in the future. Said proceed. That was.
Proceed.
Proceed. Like I said, any direction's good because they wrote down what they had, toilets, skate park. The other one was, uh, yeah, you can talk about trails too. And so it's really up to us to make our future. We could do nothing. We could uh. Weave baskets, uh, we, but we might as well be doing something since we're meeting here.
Well.
Home run somewhere.
Well, what we're doing right now is we're meeting next Tuesday to make sure that we don't lose this grant. So that's what I got going.
Okay. And 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 the ad hoc is gonna, Julie is.
Committee is actually going to recommend some things for us to pursue, right?
Right. And when is that gonna happen, Julie? When are we trying to get some results out?
Do you mind if I chime in on this one? Because it it really goes into everything about what's really critical on this consent agenda, in my opinion. And that is um, adjusting the pros budget and money and having some type of. Direction on getting that in front of the consent agenda for for the director, for the board. Um, because right now we want to, you know, get that money. Uh, unrestricted. And right now, the money that is with pros is set to go three thousand dollars to a grant writer. And the remaining funds to go to a consultant. So I definitely want to flush that out. But Steve, if you don't mind, I want to bring everybody up to speed with. All the work that's been done by ad hoc because we are really making some wonderful traction. Um, CCSD did ask that we go to the community and find out what it is that they want to see out there to complement what's going on. Between the dog park and the bathrooms that are coming. Um, and so we've been doing that. Uh, we've had several meetings. We've got. Almost forty people on our list. Um, and those attending the meeting. The next meeting coming up is this Saturday, February eleventh. The Chamber of Commerce has been kind enough to let us use their room. It's at nine AM. Public's welcome to attend. We're encouraging them to do that. And every Friday at Farmer's Market, we've had two Fridays now where Harry and Shannon. And Kermit have been out there with our clipboards. We've now got our official table set up. They're engaging the community. Educating them on our three low-impact viable recreational projects, which are simply in recommendation. To be a nine-hole frisbee golf course, a potential keyword, potential exercise circuit and potential additional. Um, trailways. So the petition is simply, do you support these three projects? Not in any one order, just do you support them? Um, I think that we probably should do that for another four Fridays. And we've got, according to um, what looks like is already signed on petition petition, it looks like we've got almost a hundred signatures already. So I think it's just data, right? It's hard data, it's conversations, it's our ability to go to CCSD and say, we did just what you asked. We've been out there on Fridays. We've had at that point, it will be roughly six or seven ad hoc meetings with the public. And here's our suggestion. Our suggestion would be X of one of these three viable product projects. Start backing into the cost estimates. Carlos, you might be able to help, you know, get in on all of that. Um. Personally, I think the Frisbee Golf Course is the least expensive of the three. That's just my personal opinion. And the the easiest to get accomplished. Um, but I'm careful to say that only because all that we know that involves permits and. Getting things um, actually from point A to B. So I hope that gives you guys a little bit more on where we're at with ad hoc. We've had, and if you don't mind, Kermit and Harry, since you're boots on the ground. On Friday at Farmer's Market, I have not been there. I've been across the street waving to them because I'm running the state rally. So if you don't mind chiming in and maybe sharing, you know, just your interpretation or how the public's been responding to you.
Well, Kermit can go first if he wishes, but I'll go ahead and speak if Kermit's all right with that.
Yes, go ahead.
So, um. So the the three of us have uh, been at uh, been at uh, the farmer's market on Friday and. My experience has been, interestingly enough, and we're getting signatures for people, not just here in the community. But people that live in other parts of the county, people that are visiting from out of town. And when I mentioned Frisbee Golf, that seems to be um, where people get most enthusiastic. And we're talking about people, especially people that are younger. And by younger, I mean like fifty and younger. Um, folks, especially folks that are visiting from out of town. Have voice of support for Frisbee Golf because it's becoming more popular. So just following up on what Julie said, that this might be the least expensive of the projects that we can put out there. It seems from my vantage point that it might be the most popular of the three that that we can put out there as well. Thank you.
And I am, Harry gets everyone who signs up because he knows everybody. So he gets more signatures in for shorter amount of time. Uh, Sha also knows everybody, but she's kind also kind of. The the pros edition of Beth Dutton, she insults them if they don't. And I stand out there and and um. I'm told that I don't want wheelchairs on on the uh, in the park. Uh, and every time I say the word golf, like Frisbee Golf, bam, they're out of town. And um. So the word golf turns a lot of people off. But it's if you, but they, the worst part about the whole thing, in my opinion, is. We don't get enough time to show them really what we're talking about. They form immediate reactions and some walk away because we're asking for signatures like. They're gonna get life insurance policy or it's another uh, you know, uh, game show. But they. They say, I just, I don't want anything out there, anything more out there. So we have a lot of that. Uh, so it it, but again, most of us, we don't. Uh, explain, we can't explain in a short thing unless they're local and somebody knows them. And I think that makes a big difference. I would like to, I'm gonna talk to Julie today later and and just say that. I think we would be better off if we put an article in the Cambrika. And gave them a chance to send in a email message saying, yeah, that sounds pretty good, or I vote for this, I vote for that. Because we, I I don't feel, they don't know me most of the time. And I don't feel that um. We are giving them sufficient explanation to understand it, to walk over. Once I show them on the maps and they get a little bit of grip of what we're talking about, it is, it is an easy sell, but not. Um, not when we talk about it and that, say, three. um, not when we talk about it and that, say, three projects and and they're pretty well defined. They think we're selling something. So a little bit more work to do, but you know, it's a steady progress. It is an interesting one, too, if you like rejection is an interesting thing. So.
Adolf?
A question. I I understand that the Cambrian is going to go online only.
That's that's McClatchy. That's the actual Cambrian as of the thirty first of March. We're talking about cambria.ca.org.
Okay, sorry.
That's okay.
Steve, I see some people in the audience have their hand up.
Good. Uh, we're gonna go to Ms. Wyatt. Here we go. There you go, Ms. Wyatt. Is that me?
Why don't we go back to her later and.
Ask to unmute.
Can you hear me?
Try it again.
I'll, I had a quick comment and question about outreach for the potential goals related to tabling at Farmer's Market. And I'm certainly appreciative of all those efforts and know how time consuming it is to go out there every week. Has there been any effort? Um, I know I've seen on Nextdoor the promotion of the meeting that was in last month, looking for public comment. Has there been any outreach via Nextdoor asking for follow up on thoughts of the disc golf course potential?
Yeah, can I answer that, Amy? I'd be more than happy to chime in on that. I I, you know, putting the ad hoc time in, Amy, Ne- Nextdoor can be very problematic.
Really?
Yes, it has a ramp fest for.
Yes.
Yeah, and so we we decided as an ad hoc committee, including those that have come to the meetings on behalf of the public that have attended, that we felt like this was the best strategy. In the past, surveys have been attempted and nobody really responds to surveys. We know that our mediums here in Cambria are very limited, including to Adolf's comment that Cambrian is getting ready to be put online. Um, so you really kind of have, you know, some old tactics other than social media platforms, and that is those conversations that happen one on, one on one. Um, we've had great success with that when it came to the skate park. I was joking with Harry and saying in the bag, I would put a can of repellent rejection or rejection repellent rather. You know, part of it is there's just going to be diverse reaction and it it's okay. I mean, that that's okay. Not everybody has to come at it with, you know, talking to you and not understanding all the details. And we do, when we set up at Farmer's Market, also have Mark Garmin bringing in actual Frisbee display so that they can see it. But I don't know, Amy, I I'm worried about Nextdoor. I mean, it just opens up this rant fest. And we're not looking for negativity or additional negativity at this point. We're looking to have just the idea and concepts of, you know, low impact viable things that can be accomplished. So I would encourage people to come to the meetings. That's the most successful place for them to voice their opinion and be part of the grassroots effort of putting the time and energy in. It's super easy to get on social media and just throw up. I don't know how else to say it.
Okay, perfect.
My feeling on that.
Amy, you got anything else?
Come to the meetings. Next meeting is this Saturday. I'd love for you to come. It's at nine o'clock. Please come. That would be wonderful, especially I hear your application is in on pros. I think it would be more than suitable for you to come to the meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Wyatt. And, uh,
Michael.
Michael Calderwood. Go ahead. Oh, hold on, I'm on it. There you go.
Okay, can you hear me? Okay?
Yes.
Hi, good morning, everybody. A couple of quick thoughts on the on the goals and objectives. In this meeting, we heard the thing when Harry outlined his notes from the meeting, it was involved uh, getting involved in more government organizations. That's in process. Steve, you spent the day uh, at that meeting uh, with their park, with the county parks. Jim has said he was going to attempt to attend the next one. So I would take my goals list and say, you know, here's a little more detail about it. And and we've heard your feedback from the board and here are the steps that are underway. Same with the ad hoc committee, the petitions, uh, the community outreach in process, making good headway. Here's our results so far. We've got how many petitions signed? And all of that. So so that's good stuff to add. And I'm not sure that you can just meet with Karen on this issue. That may, there may be some Brown Act things there, but I'm not sure. The second thing is, this is, this is kind of an odd thing, but at the Farmer's Market, uh, as as somebody who goes to the Farmer's Market, when you walk in, you've got to walk the gauntlet, you know, it's like you know, it's like going through hazing and basic training, right? You gotta get past the the film committee and the uh, you guys with your petitions and then the the guys from Jehovah's Witnesses and whatever other groups are there, maybe look at a different layout or working with the former market management to perhaps make it easier and less stressful on people coming through that Farmer's Market to take the time, listen to your pitch uh, and have a conversation rather than being elbowed by, you know, by by Harry and his basket, you know, trying to get to the to the vegetable market. Uh, so logistically, a little bit different. I know when the CCSD folks were doing their water wise conservation, they moved to the other side of the parking lot. Maybe helpful, just maybe something to think about, just to make it less aggravating for people to engage on these things. Uh, and then the final thought was, you know, thinking back to when I was growing up in the city, everybody went to a different church. And the churches had bulletins and they would put out community things and welcome community input. And maybe another, you know, series of small outreach places where uh, the committee can go to get the message out there uh, to to maybe capture uh, some of the people who either don't go to the Farmer's Market or who don't engage on social media. Just these small outlets can add up to to maybe a larger engagement. And finally, uh, it was just wonderful. Uh, when I did talk to the folks at the Farmer's Market, Kermit and Shannon and Harry, to see just the positivity that this organization brings, especially after looking at the the early meeting where it's nothing but negative and attacks on personnel and on staff and on directors, just to see the positivity that this group is bringing to an important effort. I just want to compliment everybody involved tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Appreciate your comments. All right, anybody got anything else? Adolf, you're good, everybody. Okay, it looks like that Carlos is going to facilitate the meeting for next Tuesday. Is that correct? And we will wait for the announcement from staff. Sounds good.
One other question.
Go ahead.
Can Julie restate the Saturday meeting times and where?
Absolutely, Adolf. Thank you. You actually just read my mind. Um, I, this Saturday at the Cambria Chamber of Commerce office and meeting starts at nine. We will try to be done by ten. And there'll be an agenda in place. And I believe Kermit will be there and Harry will be there and absolutely, and Jim will be there, of course. And we absolutely encourage the public to join us for their feedback. I I appreciate Michael's comment in regards to where we're setting up. So I think that will also be certainly something that's discussed in regards to being received, you know, in a positive manner on behalf of the public and how we share and engage with them. So it is a learning, it is a learning curve.
I I won't be there, Julie, uh, because we can't have too many, if Adolf wants to go.
As the Brown Act, right?
Brown Act.
Right.
So I I won't be there this time. I think you can handle it.
That's the reason I haven't come, because I'm afraid that it's too much for the Brown Act.
Totally understood. Adolf, I don't think you were saying you were coming. I think you just wanted me to define.
Information. What I was thinking is, is possibly if somebody's gonna go Friday, excuse me, to the Farmer's Market, why not have a little stack of paper and hand them out, meeting, 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 whatever. And people will take it some more, but that may increase your participation by the public. Good point.
Are we talking about handouts in regards to the project items?
Yeah, just a simple one sheet.
We have that. We do have that available right now.
Okay, you do hand that out when you go to the.
Yes.
Okay.
We have that available right now with a copy of the map of the east ranch open space as well as a listing of all three viable projects and what they what they are, a description of what they are. Those handouts are all already available on the table.
Nine AM.
All right. Thank you, people, for your time and efforts. Go conquer the world. Thank you.
I move that we leave.
Meeting adjourned.